Hello everyone and welcome to the Halifax Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017. We as always will be filmed by Area 58 Community Access Television, available to you on your local Community Access Television channel and YouTube. And as is our custom, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with the approval of the agenda. Does anyone want to add anything or are we good?
Just the holidays in Halifax, I'm really, despite the fact that we had a low attendance between adding the storm and communities and other events and no fireworks now, the people got used to that. I think the event went very well. The snow added a certain charm to it.
No ambience.
And I didn't get out to most of the buildings, I did get out over to the ice sculpture and the bottles, just magnificent.
Every year.
Job that they did there, just wonderful. So I'm very happy about all the volunteers in all the buildings who worked hard to make this event possible and especially the committee that did all the legwork and the contacts and lining everything up and putting the schedule together. So thank you to everybody.
Yes, thank you.
They put all over the elementary school, the dancing and the fun stuff was excellent.
Yeah, yeah. It worked out really well. We did a little different thing with the schedule.
All in all, special thank you to the volunteers who are out there trying to light the luminaries there, it was quite the challenge with the weather being as it was. So everyone, thank you. So that's, that's it?
That's all I got. We can give holiday greens at the end of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular session minutes for November 14th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrant.
You want to do the selection minutes first for November 14th?
She just did.
Oh, no we didn't, we did the agenda.
No, I just did regular session.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Do you guys want to do the agenda or no?
I'll move the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, jumped ahead, so I kind of lost track of where I was.
I'm sorry.
Left the body and went to the head.
I always forget that we approved the agenda.
I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Venda warrant number 49 for $373,507.73. School warrant number 50 for $319,195.50. And ambulance commitment number 11C for $65,272.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Move to approve the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 51 for $369,678.11. Venda warrant number 52 for $54,633.33. Withholding warrant number 53 for $142,480.55. And mobile park number 12, $5,160.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I move to approve the payment of the following bills. Selectments bills. Insurance account, 0-193 AAA Halifax glass windshield replacement for $404.20. For audit, Litch, Malloy, Marina LLP. Date at 11/29/17, $5,000. Law account, Attorney Lawrence from AT Mayo. Professional services for December, November, December, $1,737.50. For aggregate total of $2,878.13.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Oh, 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 see she jumped on you too.
She still got the jab.
Not myself, I didn't have dinner.
Legal ad revolting expense account, Express Newspaper for $40. Law account, Michael Gilman Esquire Professional Services, $231. Dispatch services, outside dispatch service, Terminal Exchange System, invoice 810/2017 for $360. And the final one is the law account, Douche, Williamson, Brooks. November 2017, $2,340.46.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
General Mail.
First item is the annual inventory form. This is a requirement of the town bylaws that each of the departments send in an inventory of the equipment that they have. Sorry, in this case the board would authorize Troy to sign us. This was put together by Pam and Irma to handle that. So the board would approve having the clerk sign it.
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
We're going to talk with Joan Pierce a little bit later tonight about parcels near the Burridge Pond Wildlife Refuge, so we'll get to that later. 19 Chestnut Street, we had a complaint by neighbors near 19 Chestnut Road, sorry that street, but for property there, a number of concerns, one of which was furniture left at curbside, I guess for several weeks now. My plan would be to send a letter to the owners of the property noting that
It's a living room.
The town bylaws prohibit leaving junk on the property. For a couple of the other complaints, there's really nothing to do, I mean they mentioned that the police go to the house a lot, but the police chief is quite aware of that. I talked to Ted and, you know, they'd have to respond to a number of situations there already, so they're aware of it. Multiple cars and trucks coming and going, there's no bylaw that says, that regulates the number of vehicles. If it's a noise problem, the neighbors could in fact file a nuisance disturbing the peace complaint with the police department about that. There's a pickup truck with a rejected sticker. All that has happened there is the truck needs to be put behind the house and I'll notify the owner of the property of that. They complained also about cars idling for hours on end. There is a state law and state regulation that prohibits in most cases idling for more than five minutes. Again, it's a situation that the complainant could, should be calling the police department, the police can go down there and if they find that's the case, they can cite the vehicle owner there. I think there may be things they didn't mention in the letter, but if it's bylaw problems, they can notify the board, in which case the board would direct the complaint to the proper department. If it's state statutes or criminal situations, that they should be notifying the police department. So for several of these, I'll notify the owner of what actions they need to take. For the others, I'd be notifying the complainants, you know, that they should follow up with the police department. But I'll tell them also what else we're doing about that. We had, I guess, a staff who in terms of logistics for the Eagle Scout certificates, I didn't know whether you would want the two Eagle Scout candidates, not candidates now, Eagle Scouts to come by maybe at one of the meetings in January or?
January, I was thinking January 9th because we have him Dave Walsh come in, he wants to make a presentation also on that day. It might be nice to have him on.
So you have him coming at 7:35, Harrison?
Either Dave Walsh or?
The ceremony itself was really unusual, nice, it was my 23rd, well, with two of them there, I said 24th. Ceremony for Eagle Scouts and I've said it before, they're one of the smallest units in the country, yet they're percentage wise, they have the highest rate of Eagle Scouts. Maintaining that, it's a high, high percentage.
Pam mentioned that David Walsh is coming in at 8, but I don't think that prevents him.
We have something at 7:45 too.
The Harrison family, my brother Harrison family wants to get a non-registered vehicle permit from the board for having a truck on the property next to the Red Farmhouse. It's a separate parcel from the Red Farmhouse.
The one that has a for sale sign on it?
Yes, right. So I'm going to start the process, he's going to still need to get the butters list and get to notify butters and all that, but my plan is to price set that up for the night.
I thought, I thought the general law was that you could have one unregistered car with?
As long as it's behind the house. It can't be seen from the street.
So tell them for the stock eight fifths there.
We do have an ambulance abatement for November?
I make a motion that we abate $38,226.19 for the month of November.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
I did want to inform the board that Susan Johnson was able to obtain a $7,500 recycling grant for a compactor for the collection of single stream recyclables. She did work in getting the grant and this was a competitive grant, this was not a formula grant, so.
Excellent, good, kudos.
Very good.
Thank you letter should go up.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to deal with the revocation hearing later tonight on evergreen beverages. On the school committee vacancy, today was the deadline for applications to be filed, we received two, one from Edward Bryan and one from Alexander Mead. I need to set up a joint meeting with the school committee and the selectmen to conduct interviews and I don't know what people's schedules are like.
I saw Summer today, we had a meeting at four o'clock and she told me that Tuesdays work for her committee.
Okay, so does the board want to in fact meet on the 26th for this occasion or the other, another possibility would be the 2nd, the day after New Year's?
I'd rather have the day after New Year's.
Yeah likewise.
And Christmas.
For any number of reasons.
I mean because there may be some travel involved and it's going to have a?
Let me aim for that, let me contact Summer and make sure that the committee can make it and then if they can, I'll contact the candidates and we'll set up a special meeting probably with just that item unless something else comes up in the weeks between. Reminder that OCP is coming in to meet with the traffic study committee this Thursday at 9:00 AM here in the Selectments meeting room. I did post a case of quorum of the board who's going to present. Steve is coming in, or study was coming in about now, wait a couple more minutes because we continued the discussion about Pine Street originally was on the truck exclusion question and the board had agreed that we weren't going to do a truck exclusion, but wanted to bring back the item of what the status was for the bridge, so I'll wait for Steve to come back. Alcohol license inspections, maybe we, we have a 7:45, we'll wait for him. If you want to do the licenses and permits now, we could do that.
Sure.
Yeah, let's do it.
Do you want me to move them as printed in the agenda?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to say there's only one place I have been to, the Noble Gas Station, I don't see any major issue there.
Alright, so I make a motion that we approve the alcohol beverages under general on premises for wine and malt for unit 5 bar LLC and as printed in, the list that's printed in the agenda that includes all alcohol, all alcoholic and then wine and malt subcategories.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the class one for Halifax Mobile Home Estates Association and Morgan Power Equipment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the class two permits for the businesses that are printed in the agenda.
And there's no outstanding problems with any of that this?
No, the only one that we had an outstanding problem with is the one we're having a hearing about, which I'm going to make a recommendation to the board at that time.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve the class three for Steve's auto recycling.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the column that, I always, I say it correctly and then when I think to say it, I?
This one you see it?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that.
As printed in the agenda, particular, yeah. So fine, that word just ties me up. As printed in the agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the New Year's extended hours for the Halifax Country Club and for beers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the public entertainment for Sundays for Halifax Investments Country Club and Mont Ponce Inn, Happy Dragon and the T Box.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the public entertainment for weekdays for the businesses that are listed in the agenda.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Moving right along.
That was good, I just got that word, delayed this a little bit.
I'm just on the school repair project, next meeting is tomorrow at 9:30. The process of the bidding for the siding windows and doors has started in that the initial announcements were put out last week. The, the bid documents will be available tomorrow in fact and the bid deadline I believe is January 8th.
Okay.
So the process is moving forward. Unfortunately on Mont Ponce Pond on the old pumping facility, the bid deadline was November 30th, we didn't receive any bids from any engineering firms. We're rebidding with a deadline of January 16th. We are getting some emails of interest, phone calls and such this time around, so maybe something happened better. Just a back one on the junk car, 27 Hillside Avenue, that's still there, so unfortunately I've already had sent out the certified letter a couple of weeks ago notifying them that, you know, they were in violation and the fines would start if we didn't have the car removed by today, the car is still there, so I'll just start counting days and at 10 days send them another notice with the fine notice on it. There's a car at Hillside and 11th. I had sent the regular mail to them, we'll move up to certified on that, same as a car at the corner of Lingan Street and Mont Ponce Street. So we've already talked about the car over here by the Red Barn, the Red Barn House, that was the next thing on the list. Hope's Tavern, Missland School Building Committee discussed the updated plans last week, I gave copies to the board. They still needed to get the contract done with the architect and then I need to get an application into the ZBA for a variance hearing next month because it's the closest to the lot lines. This building committee is going to be meeting with Vertex, the owner, project manager tomorrow at 7:00 and I believe our highways there is here, so hi.
Steve.
So we're now, we're now three feet off the highway instead of the one foot there?
A little bit like that, yeah. So what had happened was a month ago, the board had met with interested parties about the truck exclusion for Pine Street and after hearing from everybody, the board decided they weren't going to serve truck exclusion. But obviously a number of people are concerned about the bridge, so the board wanted to return to that subject tonight and find out what the status is.
I looked into some grant money on that and one that I found, I'd have to finish by June 30th, it seems probably seems to be a lot of the trouble happening, I mean there's a chance?
You mean the work to get done?
Done, probably by that date, so I'm going to start looking for some more and I talked to Greensale.
Which is the engineering firm you've been using?
Yeah, see what I can do with that.
Well, you see whether they think it's very much a wear design would be needed rather than just a repair job.
Yeah. And that's all that's important with that.
And the state has no plans of doing anything at all? The grant is from the state itself?
Small bridge, public grant.
Why does it have such a short deadline? What if you don't put it in?
It'll take a while, but they put it all, I think it's every three months to fund this grant, yeah. And I just found it, so I'm going to try and get it, so.
Before Steve was in the hot seat, the highway department had received information about it.
He has heated seats in his car?
He didn't get that, not with that truck. Air conditioning, yes, no heated seats though. And so, you know, now that Steve's, Steve's been juggling a number of different projects and this would be one of them, he's been researching what the availability is. I mean, if it, so it's still a possibility, but it would require getting all the engineering work done and having money to do that and then going, getting the grant and getting the money to do it, so.
And Greensale is also looking for grants also.
Who is?
Is that a state, is that a state road?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's why we're going through loops, because I was thinking if it was a state road, were they responsible for maintaining it?
Have we had an assessment of the actual condition? Do we have anything imminent that's?
Well, that's the whole reason that?
No, I understand, but I mean imminent like tomorrow or?
No, this has been about 15 years and more that we've been on the list.
On the radar? Yeah, okay.
It's a situation obviously deteriorated much more so during the last year and that's why the Jersey Gary's are up there, that restrict the traffic.
Yeah, the state has it out there.
We do have a state report, they go out there, maybe, it's been at least twice in the last year now, they're going out there to, and Steve just got the latest report a couple of weeks ago, so. Okay, so I'll give you a buzz maybe, I'll give you a buzz on the 8th of January and then we'll do the board's meeting on the 9th and?
Just to see what's?
Come back in again, but at least I'll talk to you about any updates.
Thank you, that was super quick.
Thanks, Steve.
That was a gift for you, huh?
Yeah.
Well, I like the windmills, I.
Yeah.
In case and I'll see you, Merry Christmas.
Is there anything else you can talk to the board about?
We almost got $50,000 a day for the fuel tanks, which I talked to the state on that one, we all said that the tanks tested, so we're good for now.
But you were working with Greensale to do the engineering too?
To get that taken out of ground and?
Put above ground.
Yeah, we approved that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
I'll see you this week.
And I take it we were already prepared for the snow and everything because somebody was throwing?
Yes, we had a good test the other day, my first one, so.
That's good.
I think it was smooth.
Good, good for you, congrats.
Still shielded truck part.
Yeah.
But it's that carrier's now getting the hookset set on it, so.
Okay.
Hopefully I have it by the end of the month.
Yeah, that means we'll get no snow, which is great.
Right.
Yeah.
It's supposed to snow today.
So we put down, we put down salt tomorrow so the black ice don't impede my progress, right?
Right. No, I'll put the same thing today for Christmas.
Yeah.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks so much for coming. Merry Christmas, my husband.
Merry Christmas.
One note here on the zoning bylaws, I realized that, I was going back and looking at the calendar, the board had met with the regulatory boards and departments back in late September about some possibilities for changes in the zoning bylaws. We really haven't heard anything back from anybody since then. My interesting is there may have been discussions, for instance, in the ZBA and or the planning board, but nothing's come out of them, this actual paper. My concern is that the clock is actually starting to run closer simply because?
We're going to have to have a hearings, please.
We have to have a hearing, it has to be on the warrant. We'd like to, I'd like to try and aim to get some wording that everybody would agree to on the warrant, if that's not possible, then someone propose something, so at least move the discussion a lot.
Well, in particular, a couple of bylaws that we've had recent issues with, those need to be addressed on some level. Did we specifically ask the planning board to review that?
Well, we asked everybody to, suggestions to the draft site.
Maybe we need to?
Have them come in on the 23rd?
Yeah, yeah, and just ask where we're at and what they think they can accomplish or what they're interested in accomplishing and then we might have to look at trying to do something ourselves.
This is for the annual town meeting, maybe.
So my aim would be to get, drop them, everybody to know, they'll have a meeting between now and the 23rd, all the committees would, and say, you know, we obviously would like to have it all come back on the 23rd with any suggestions in terms of actual text and such. Maybe reach a consensus on one or more of them and if not, then individuals, in terms of individual departments or boards can submit items to the planning board, even if everybody doesn't agree, at least?
Right, at least it's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's okay, so I'll do that, okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
That's what I've got for you, I mean obviously a lot of things happening, but it's more information for the board than anything else at this point.
Right. So our, we're a couple of minutes from 8 o'clock, unless we have something else to do, we can just banter for a few minutes, we don't have to wait till 8:00 in case anybody comes in for this.
Troy and I have been practicing on Christmas cards, haven't we?
I wish you Merry Christmas.
Wait a minute, you have to get closer to the mic, Troy.
No, no, then I have to get down to the Berry, Berrymark, "I wish you Merry Christmas."
Oh, that would be so funny.
Oh, that was very good.
Remember that movie, Love Actually?
Yeah.
And that scene when the driver starts singing beautifully? That's one of my favorite scenes.
Homer Powell used to blow me away because it's the talking to golly and all of a sudden he comes out with a big Berry calling voice, "Oh."
Really?
The problem I had with that was you could still picture him in Mayberry singing that song, it was still kind of out there.
I don't have a singing voice at all. It's pretty.
I haven't seen Carols for a long time. It's not since they kicked me out of the choir.
They have to vote to cancel meeting, no, cancel meeting on the 26th, are we going to meet on the 26th?
No, we're not going to. Well, you could have the board do that, sure, go ahead and do it, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
I move that we cancel the scheduled meeting for December 26th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very sad about it.
I was going to vote no, just?
And I move that we have no less than, no more than two hour meetings.
I bet I can get a second for that.
You know, I was just talking to a gentleman who's from Clinton and he said that they've now limited theirs from 7 to 9.
Really?
What?
Their meeting.
Well, they got a new town manager, don't they, over there?
I thought you meant all of them.
No, they're going from 5 to 7.
The selectmen?
Um, I think so.
Oh.
Oh, no, no, all the town, all the town offices on Monday evenings are now going to be open from 5 to 7.
That's nice though.
Yeah, starting the 18th. Now I assumed that meant the selectmen, but perhaps it doesn't.
Hmm, privilege. Thank you for the offer.
You already have one? Did I offer one, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody want a root beer?
No, thank you.
It's sugar free.
It's actually not root beer. What's she trying to say?
Lozen, but it's root beer flavored.
It's sugar free?
Yeah, yeah, it's sugar free.
Because most of them aren't.
Yeah, no, they're very hard to find and I got them at?
I was always told not to mess with a game.
Believe it or not, I got them at Ocean State Jockey.
And it's got Splenda?
I think it could be, I'm a Stevie person, I'm not much of a Splenda girl, but in moderation.
All things in moderation, Ben Franklin.
You have a ton of money over there.
Yes, it has Splenda.
He also said a few other things that I can't?
Who do you want to call at eight?
Oh, good, thank you, thank you.
Yes, it is now 8 o'clock and at 8 o'clock?
We did, I stopped stretching.
We are talking to the folks from the T Box?
Yay.
Change of alcohol license from beer and wine to all alcohol.
Thank you so much.
Come on up.
I like the T Box.
Personally, I don't know, do you want to do that because that's a long flight of stairs to be falling down.
There'll be falling down if you do not observe.
You can take?
That's right, because you are tip certified.
Yes, you are.
And you can take the elevator.
Yes, and you can take the elevator. Do we need to talk about the?
Why?
Well, honestly, why, I think we made a mistake 10 years ago not applying for a
Well, honestly, why, I think we made a mistake ten years ago not applying for a regular license anyways. Because we did not, we don't have a lot of volume as it is. So since we're small, we might as well be able to sell whatever we can. We're only seasonal, basically from January until April. We're close, we do a couple of parties here and there during the summer. And every once in a while, we just have people asking us, oh, can I get a couple of drinks there? People aren't there for more than an hour or two to play golf. So we would have no problem with time wise. And our, I think we'll just expand our business. Maybe will be something where we have to actually put in a little longer area or increase what kind of activity we have. So we could either expand our business or just even enhance it, would be the simple answer.
Do you still have the pool table?
Yes, we still do. You guys just approved the license for that.
I've had occasion going to the T-Box a lot over the years since it opened and I've never seen an issue up there. I personally don't have any issue with doing it. It can only get so big because it's only so big.
And we're only allowed to have thirty-five people in there. I don't think we've ever hit that number in ten years.
So you're looking to become a full service deliverer?
Full service on premise, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license to include all alcohol.
Well, it says T-Box, didn't say anything about liquor.
Doesn't say anything about beer and wine, but yeah. And we didn't get a customer until we got our beer and wine. For two months, we sat there with no customers. Till the ABCC approved the license.
No, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Wish you well. Good luck.
Good luck.
Yeah, do you have the green?
Yes.
So let me ask you a question. When you... You guys pay for your own tip certification and companies?
Yes, actually, this one we're gonna do it online. I guess you can do it all, they changed last year, we can do it online. We didn't because I was still on my old one. So I have to, we're gonna have a, him and I are gonna sit there and watch a video online and try to answer the questions, just like I do for my ZDA.
Check off.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Everything's online now.
I was talking...
I didn't know you could do that.
I was talking to a couple of people who work within the service business and they were saying that the owner wasn't paying for that tip certification. They had to pay for it earlier.
Thank you very much. Well, this is gonna get to have more.
Merry Christmas.
We're all gonna pay for it.
Thank you.
We're all gonna sit there and watch it like a group.
Thank you.
May I suggest...
Merry Christmas.
May I suggest the board that they move their schedule around and have Joan top of them now?
Yes, so we can move it along.
She's taking us to the woods and the streams and the gullies and...
Well, this keeps me from getting nervous, you know.
Yeah, Joe, the meeting was set up so in case any of these appointments took time, we'd have, we wouldn't be rushing things. On the other hand, some of these appointments are taking sixty seconds and...
Oh, okay, sure. Well, should I start?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Joan Pierce and I work for the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game. And Charlie, you have my...
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Troy, thank you very much. The panel is ready. You want another? There you go. Okay. So I dropped off for Charlie a copy of this little proposal. I have an extra if someone doesn't have. I think we are outside. Yes, you should have one, but that's the case.
We have colors and everything.
There you go, all right.
I don't know what I did with it, but...
It's right here.
No, I've got it. I was looking at it.
Right here.
Thank you, Ma. Thanks, Ma.
Joe, go have a seat.
Oh, well, okay, whatever. So we are in the process, Fish and Game, and everyone knows where we are. The Burrage Pond, WMA is all up here and this is the town's seventeen acre, which you finally got. Okay, and so...
You're preparing for me, aren't you?
Yeah, I have a gate, I have a secret gate right here.
I understand, I understand. So we have been contacting, and I don't want to say people's names, but because our negotiations with people are confidential. But we have been contacted by the family that owns this lot ten. They would like to sell us the property for open space.
So would we.
Thank you.
Like to sell our parcel.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, anyway.
I'm jumping ahead with my...
That's okay. And we have not arrived at a price, agreed upon price yet. I have a committee, of course, that has to vote on things. They don't vote until either January or February. Yeah, the family understands this. But anyway, the issue that we have, I think this is a beautiful property and will be a terrific addition to Burrage Pond. But it doesn't abut us. And so what I'm here to ask, I'm not expecting an answer, but just to prepare you so we can have a future discussion. We would like to have the town convey a conservation restriction on the rear part of the property. It would be permanent. It would allow permanent public access from map ten, assuming that we are able to purchase it to Burrage Pond. The town still owns the property. It doesn't affect anything where your road frontage is. And that's, that's it.
But it would affect us if we decided we wanted to build something on that property for whatever purpose you said it's...
In the back.
Once we deed it over, it's forever.
Oh, absolutely. The conservation restriction would be in perpetuity. Now, but it's only gonna be in the back part, which it would be difficult to build back here. I'm not saying it would be impossible, but your road frontage is here. And this, we call it pinch point, is only forty-one feet wide. And, yeah, it is something for the town to think about. It would, the conservation restriction would exclude you from building, from excavating sand and gravel, from doing those sorts of things. It would allow the town to create trails. If you wanted to do forestry, if you wanted things that are consistent with the property, if it were conservation land, which I understand that it's not. So that's, that's it. But ask any questions.
I'm now lifting the gate.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
My personal history with this property goes back many, many years. It was very difficult to deal with the state...
Yes.
On this property. It originally started with, not to give you too much information here, but it originally started with the rollback of the conservation land when Northland sold the property to the state.
Yes.
When the state totally ignored the town of Halifax, although they did go out and deal with the town of Hanson, which had a parcel there. Apparently Halifax didn't count with the state. And I'm not totally angry at the state because they've done a lot of good things for us. But Fisheries and Game in particular. And then, of course, we did settle for some cash and some land.
Yes.
And it took us ten years to get title to the land after much, much effort.
Yes.
Including getting the legislature involved. And then we did acquiesce and take a parcel that was so gerrymandered as to not be of a whole lot of value to us. Now, I'm only looking out for the best interest of the town here and to soothe my own self because I was angry. I was very angry about the whole process.
Yes.
And so now what we're being asked to do is to give up use of the property or at least allow us, have us not agree to do anything with that particular parcel of property, more or less.
In the back, yes.
Except that it also slightly abuts a parcel that we own.
By quite a bit.
Yeah. So, you know, perhaps we might have some use of it. I find it kind of interesting that we're willing to now buy this other piece of property from the... I can tell you who they are because I'm not constrained to Katz and Brothers. But nobody mentioned anything about buying the property from us.
Oh, okay.
I might be interested in trying to sell the property back to the state. What I'm getting at is, here, here it is, it's yours, we want it back. I have to deal with that myself.
Yes. Well, I know that this is, that the seventeen acres is a sore point. And what I was doing, what I was intending to do was come in with something that would be as low key as, if... I didn't want to ask the town to sell something that it took you almost fifteen years...
Fifteen years, yeah.
To get from us. I thought that was asking for too much. And, but if you want to enter into that or if you want to entertain...
Oh, are you okay?
I'm fine.
Can you breathe?
He's talking.
No, I can't breathe.
I'm only joking.
Oh, why? He's just saying, get up. Because I will call my...
Okay.
Oh, I...
And for example, but if you wanted to sell the back part, but it doesn't, it's not going to appraise very high. And, you know, I'm very upfront with this. But you could keep the front part, which would have perhaps more utility, but I don't know. I don't know what the town is talking about. But we are certainly open to that. Now, we're not on camera, are we?
Yes, we are.
We are, okay, well, anyway. So that there are, anyway, that's map ten we would like to acquire. We are open to looking at other vacant pieces of property, but that's not what I'm here to talk about and that would be premature. So...
What I see is Fisheries and Game needing this parcel of ours to make the purchase of the other parcel viable.
Yes.
So when you're telling me that it doesn't have a lot of appraised value, perhaps it does not. But doesn't have any perceived value, yes.
Yes.
And that's just me talking now. I'm not talking to the board by any stretch. It's just my experience. I'm really thin with Fisheries and Game.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, I definitely have heard about this for many years. I mean, I served on the board. I remember you and I went on a field trip to the State House on this particular issue when we were trying to get the land back, I think it was.
Yeah, well, to get...
Yeah.
The cash part of it took forever as well, but we got that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the land thing just dragged on. And I know, I know the concept. The concept is if we hang on long enough, everybody will change and nobody will have a historical perspective or a memory.
But there are two people that sit on this board. I've been sitting on this board for a long time. And it was, it was not a fun thing because when the Cranberry people strewed the term, did bodily bad things to the property by picking all the sand and gravel and stuff out, all of a sudden it changes and they made a lot of money and without even notifying us what they were gonna do. All of a sudden, they sell it to the state. Sold it to the state and we had no, as my compadre has said, we had no say in it whatsoever. And then the slightest even worse to go to Hanson and kind of deal with slight.
So I get all of that and I respect all of that.
Absolutely.
It's a great point that you make about selling that piece of land. Again, I don't know how much we could get for it, but I think that, I think maybe you're trying to correct a wrong.
Well, what I'm seeing here is we finally give it to you, but the plan is to take it back. Not effectively, well, effectively, but not physically. You know, we still want the use of it even though we gave it to you after fifteen years. I, 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 this is my, my problem. And I'm not gonna stand in the way of anything that's good for the town.
I understand.
But I need to air it out because it's been a burden to my saddle for a lot of years.
It has and deserved. I mean, I totally respect that you need to get it out and talk about it because it really took a lot of energy and time and we felt like we were not respected during the process. But as you said, at the end of the day, you know, this area is really important to our residents and they do enjoy using that property. And those people who are selling the property or potentially selling the property, you know, they had some pretty difficult times with having Burrage Pond behind them. And so for that, it totally makes sense. So I'm willing to work with whatever we...
We're here to do what's best, I'm sorry. We're here to do what's best, what's best for citizens of the town of Halifax. But we had to air that. But at the same time, it's in the front, well, there was, in the front for the town and the citizens of the town to be slighted the way it was in the first place. But I'm also here to make sure that those people who reside in the town get the kind of services and consideration that they need. We're gonna change this. But as you say, tonight's presentation is just to open the door. We're gonna go for a change, so I'm willing to look at it from that part of it.
So maybe you could make us an offer?
Will, I will be happy to.
Awesome.
Well, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Even now, I'm feeling a little slight because we're gonna negotiate for monetary consideration with the parcel in front, but with you guys, we figure you just get it, please.
Well...
And this isn't directed to you. And my animosity is directed to a whole group of other people.
Yes. I completely understand. I mean, that's how I was trying to come in with as little as possible.
I understand.
You know, I don't want, but you need to vent and that's quite all right. I don't mind it at all. Now, well, what if, when is your next meeting, you know?
The Simmons meeting?
Yes.
Well, the next normal meeting's gonna be on January eighth.
Okay, all right. So I have colleagues up in Boston that I will run by. What if we have a couple of proposals for the town? One will be this simple one that we're asking for a gift back here. And the other is, oh, you could have three. Do you want to sell just the back? Do you want to sell the whole thing?
I think the back, if I was, if I was interested in taking an offering myself personally, it would be the parcel that you're looking for. Because that would be the least intrusive.
Yes, exactly.
The least valuable in the sense of being able to do something with it.
Okay. We would prefer, I think, to own this piece of the back because then it's just one entity and you don't have to deal with us anymore.
See, for us, it's like you. If we sell it to you, we've still got it because we can use it.
That's right. That's exactly it.
Which is opposed to, you gave it to us, but now you're taking it back.
That's right.
See, it all works. We're all on the same page.
In other words, I'm giving you the car, but you gotta put the gas and maintain it.
It's just we want to do it this time instead of...
That's fine. It's perfectly...
At least I want to do it.
You're so agreeable, I love that.
Well, okay, so I will tell you a little bit. I like expressions and there's one that I do use. And it is the fastest way to get people to work with you is to see things from their perspective. And I find that is true. So, and I came in knowing that this seventeen acre parcel is a real difficult topic for the town. I completely understand that.
We have post-traumatic...
You can't walk on eggshells without cracking a few of them.
That's right. No, I, it was terrible. It took way too long. It's only seventeen acres, you know, and I know that some people, Fish and Game, we fought it through the nail and it just took forever. And so hopefully by working on this piece, which I think would be an excellent...
Yeah.
Property, that's the piece that has a lot of frontage with the other town parcels.
Yeah.
In any event, I will come back to you probably January ninth. I won't promise because my colleagues all have vacation, something like that. But, but we, and hopefully the family will be patient. I told them it's not gonna happen overnight.
Well, so that you, so that you're not being pushed too fast on a deal, you know, and just give us a, don't give us a particular date you can be back because you're not sure you're gonna make that.
Okay. Well, I'll be in touch with Charlie and we do, I have to move on this anyway because we have to, you know, be responsive to the family.
How did you draw the short strike?
Well, this is my job. So, anyway, so I will come back, do the board's selection with a couple of different proposals.
Are you guys good with this? Because I don't want to speak to the board here. I'm just speaking for myself. I'm just speaking for myself.
No, no, no. I think, I think you bring up some great points and we, all of the options are being on the table.
That's right. Okay, that's fine.
And so all the options are on the table and then we sort of look at it.
That in fact satisfies me because there's at least three options and we can look at it, so the ones, say, give it back to us or no, or whatever.
I'm confident we can figure it out.
One of, one of the choices will be that we want to purchase just the part in the back.
Yes.
And, um...
Perfect.
That was fine. So this is another 60-minute discussion.
I hope you didn't have a long commute home.
Well, I, I work in Buzzards Bay and I live in Quincy. And everything is on my way home or on my way to the office.
That works.
So we haven't been charging a toll going through there?
No.
Wait a minute, we can think about that.
No, that's okay. So, all right, so I will be back in January, Charlie, but I will give you proposals before in advance of your meeting. I will have some feedback from my colleagues. Now, this is, it's difficult.
We're well aware of that.
Okay. That I won't have feedback from everybody until we have a meeting, which will be sometime in January or February. So the proposals that I present to you will not necessarily have been approved by my committee.
Understood.
And so there may be some back and forth. Or you may say, "Well, we like that proposal, but we want this changed."
Yes.
And that's fine.
That's good.
Okay.
Awesome, John.
Thank you.
This was great.
I hope I didn't come off too disagreeable.
No, 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 no. It's much, I have learned, I've been in this job for almost 20 years, you have to be blunt. You have to be careful. You have to be blunt. You have to put everything out there. There's no other way to do it.
My favorite thing is don't let somebody, don't internalize somebody else's problems, try to help them with it if they have, don't make a choice.
That's, that's, that's another good one. Yes, all right. So thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, and have a good evening.
Good job.
Have a safe drive home.
Would you like, I actually, when I was doing that inspection, took down Lily's phone number. Would you like me to text her and have her know?
Sure. Because the nine o'clock is simply an appointment time. It's not a public hearing.
That's what I know.
We didn't give a notice or anything like that. So if they want to come in early, by all means, we're all things are doing.
Did they bring a takeout? Do we want to, do we want to take a recess here?
We need to do the revocation hearing.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right.
And then we can take a recess after that.
Hi. Oh, yeah, well, I was just going to tell you, we continue early, so that's perfect. Okay, thank you, Lily. Okay, bye-bye. She's on the way.
Okay, so if the board, we need to deal with the revocation hearing for the alcohol license package store. I'm sorry?
Oh, nothing, Charlie, it was time, I was able to watch this.
Um, revocation hearing for the alcohol license for evergreen beverages. The owner indicated to the treasure collector that he was not coming in to a hearing, but during this month, he's, he has paid $10,000 down of his taxes that are in arrears. It's a little bit more than his normal annual payments in the sense that if everything was being done properly, he'd be paying something only over about $9,600 a year in property taxes and such. So by making the $10,000, it's a little bit ahead of where he would have been a month ago. Given that, what I'm recommending to the board is the following, that the board do renew the package store license for '28 and not revoke it. That as part of the renewal, the board inform the owner that a payment of at least $1,000 per month must be made during 2018 to continue to bring down the amount of taxes. That the board will also review the tax stats of the business in the spring of 2018 to determine further actions needed. And I'm also recommending, I got in a note from the state agency not to do with back taxes and such, but I see no harm in suggesting to him that there's the state agency that can help businesses, not in terms of grants or loans, but financial advice so that a business that is struggling to stay afloat can seek help from the state in terms of basically a financial planning, I think they're about.
Yes, yes.
They don't have to take advantage of it by any, so this should not be a requirement at all, but I want to make sure that the owner knows that this is available to him and maybe...
Could be some help.
Yeah, it could be some help. So if someone wanted to make a motion along those lines?
I will make a motion as Charlie's proposing.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Court is in session.
I vote that we don't give them the license, nothing.
You can't. We haven't had our due process yet.
Okay, step it down when I...
We let she in the door.
Okay, order up some due process. Yeah, is that in the appetizer? If there are bones in the crab rangoon, we got problems. So if the board can continue on the matter before...
Yes, so I made, I made the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. And then we can go for this matter.
He says he has a bone to pick with those chicken wings.
All of you during the grand opening, I was going to spend some quality time with your boss, but nobody showed up.
Yeah, I was so busy. I actually came in. The line around the building, I said, "I'm not going."
I did exactly the same thing.
Yeah, there was a line out the door.
Well, I didn't, you didn't say that.
I was getting all excited to see you guys. And not, not say, I spent a lot of time at camp. But you guys, no show. I said, "Should I take this tour still?"
No.
No.
No, not, not at all.
I expect, I expected to bring takeout when you were coming in today, so it's the first thing I asked.
I would have, but I didn't want that period to take you a whole bunch of people.
Well, we could treat you.
Best advertising you can get is on TV is a meeting.
Next time. Next, next one.
I'm only joking.
So they're here for the public weekday, meaning Monday through Saturday entertainment license. Now, Sunday also. Okay, so Sunday also. And this is for 2017 and 2018?
Yes, because we speculate through the holiday season and it'd be crazy to not be able to do it this last month with the holidays.
And the types of public entertainment that are going to be listed on the license card?
I didn't list them, DJ, live band, and jukebox, not knowing what.
You may end up with people foot high, just kind of have a live band or something.
So I just listed those three as the potential.
Is there anything, is all that on the list?
Yeah, it is, it is, yeah. Yeah, and I know in that particular location, we have had all three and we haven't had any issues in the past.
I don't have any major issues with it. I have none. All we need is a motion. Really continued use of the property as it was prior to your being there.
I make a motion that we approve the entertainment license to include jukebox, live band, and DJ.
I wanted to put a condition on it that you refuse to sell my daughter Chinese food because I've been eating it for two weeks.
Really?
Really?
It's excellent, excellent.
I've heard nothing but good things about, about it. And some of your employees, some of your employees who I knew worked elsewhere, so they're very happy with it.
Yeah, I think we ran into some problems with breaking and re-staffed. The service model wasn't...
Always, always the way with restaurants.
But the food was, the food was good, but I guess the service model, you have to go up the kinks on that.
Yeah, takes time. I'm sure you'll be totally fine. Yeah.
Because, you know, I might take all quarters with you.
I went by there, it was about 2:00 yesterday afternoon, and it would look like it was the dinner crowd.
Yeah, I was about to ask if, if part of your entertainment is going to be stand-up comic, right? You're going to be doing that?
My, my kicking rates are too high for her. It's higher than my lawyer.
Like I said, stand-up comic.
Well, I guess I would really like to have you guys stay at the afterday, but next time, I'll catch you.
Next time, absolutely.
You have to survive.
No, absolutely, I actually...
You did survive for nothing, right?
No, I know, but everything went well and so, no, I will be in for food. I haven't had an opportunity there. I was away.
You could skip the inspection, the company.
Yeah. Now that I've inspected.
I thought that was all part of the inspection, which will do taste tests, follow the control.
So now that's dying company.
Does the board have a motion on the floor?
I do.
I second it.
All those in favor? All right, unanimous.
All right. Let the music begin.
Are you taking orders for Christmas Day here? I got to get in there.
I don't know. I, I hail from Nated, so that's the law of the hall.
From where? Nated?
I live in Nated.
Yeah, I used to be, oh, for this? I used to be a cop out in Framia.
We could have FaceTimed you in.
Yeah. We should buy you Chinese.
How come they can't concerts call this thing?
Because they just, they just want to spend time with you.
Because there's no social skills as it is. We don't do electronics.
I wouldn't get a takeout, otherwise she's shopping bag.
Oh, good. Oh, good. All right, awesome. So that'll help you for the ride home. Do you have a... Yes, you could.
No, I have to...
Get a swing up with you.
Well, longer they could fly.
Get a straw for the soup and...
So I fully expect you guys to swing by and get a first-hand experience after this one.
And you know, I walked in there. Yeah. Place looks great, nice and bright. I love the lighting. I like the openness of between the two.
Need to cut some of those shrubs down around your sign.
Now, do you have a sports, sports stain?
At least the bottom of the sign, you can cut them down a little. I talked to Bob about it.
Neon.
No.
No, no, no.
Well, hey, the selectmen suggested, you might as well say no.
I don't think Tom mentioned neon. No, no, no. I just said, "Cut the shrubs." That's all I was going to tell him.
Tom signed what?
So we're done?
I think we're done. Thank you again. No. You're so sweet. You're so sweet.
I had a schedule, you swing by, haven't you?
I don't drink.
Huh?
I don't drink.
I don't either. So they have to show these samples of the stuff.
You trying to tempt me, woman? Is that a bribe?
I'll have nightmares all night if I eat this late. Thank you, though. I will come in this week, I promise. I promise. No, no, no inspection. Inspections are done.
See, I like, I like the shrimp fried rice along with the chicken wings.
Uh, some other time, maybe.
We're lasting the agenda, right?
Yes. So when you go, we go.
If you swing by, I'll stay.
No, you've got to go home. You've got to go home. It's late night.
I know.
My wife's at home. She wants me to stay. She doesn't, we've married 40 years. She doesn't want to see me. Lily is not my wife.
Hey, good night, folks. Best of luck. We will, we will.
Good luck.
There's only one green old Tom sign.
Good night.
Oh, Tom, those are for you. Well, that was awesome. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Well, and before that, just to wish everybody a wonderful holiday season. I'm hoping that everybody out in our TV audience gets to celebrate, observe, and whatever else they want to do with the people, friends and family they are looking forward to doing it with. And if that means maybe simply sitting on a couch and enjoying the fireside and whatever else, a less noisy atmosphere, then so be it. That'd be great, too.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie.
Thank you. Yesterday was, today starts the...
Hanukkah, tonight.
Tonight, yes.
Yes.
Barbara and I will figure out who's going to get home first and light the candle. Well, the kid, well, with the kids in school, it's very low-key. We've got the celebration at synagogue this Saturday, so...
Are you going to get a present tonight?
We do not do presents for adults.
Your children are pretty much adults to this.
21 and 28, yeah.
Yes, so they don't...
They're, they're, they get a tuition payment. That's what they get.
Room and board.
Then we have, this is the tea box, so I need you guys to sign over here so I can get this A, B, C, D. And then Tom needs to sign these two yellow ones.
I like the title here, "The Honorable." I like that.
Tom needs to sign those, those two yellow ones, do the little Sunday afternoon ones here.
Sorry.
So Tom, sorry, it's that honorable Thomas Miller.
So we could have our cable guy leave, would the board like to adjourn its meeting?
Right.
I did, I made a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
And all a Happy New Year.
Good night.